Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, like to call the meeting to order. Can I have roll call, please?
Certainly. Mr. Antoine?
Here.
Mrs. Bonick?
Here.
Um, Mr. Connor is absent with notice. Dr. Demas?
Here.
Mrs. Ikors?
Here.
I'm here. Mr. Young?
Here.
Wonderful.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Moved by Dr. Demas.
Support.
Supported by Mike. Antoine? Any questions or concerns? I see we do have closed session. We are potentially voting on something, so we should leave the agenda as is?
No.
No, we are not voting anything. Would it be okay with the board if we move up board discussion and public comment since we won't be coming out of closed session to vote?
Yes.
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 All right. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Presentations, we have none. Bulldog Spotlight, we have none. Moving on to consent action. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Demas. Can I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Mrs. Rice. This is for the general fund bills, the approval of the financial reports, the wire transfer report, purchasing card expenditures, and the minutes of the regular meeting on June 24th. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to communications. Okay.
So the one came out last week from the MASP on the delegate assembly, which is at the fall conference. That was the...
I don't think your microphone's on.
We received a communication from the MASP, I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday, in regards to selecting a delegate for the assembly at the fall conference in October. So we've included that, you know, for the board tonight.
And I did hear, I don't think he sent it to everybody, I think it actually went to just Gus and I, that Wayne wants to be considered. He has repeatedly attended, so it's certainly open if anyone else would want to attend. Just let me know in the next little bit, so we can make appropriate accommodations.
That's all we have for communications.
All right. Committee reports. I believe myself and Mr. Antoine attended facilities. Are you going to go give that report? Thank you.
Sure. The facilities meeting was on July 15th. We talked about the 2021 bond projects, the Group One and Two projects. There's a common theme in this meeting, or that was presented in this meeting, is that the rain was affecting a lot of the progress with the projects that were outside. Indian Hills, they're working on getting the elevator inspected by the state. Croswell, working on some ceiling, painting, floors, things of that nature. There is a, there was a district response to a change order that was taken care of by the district. And there is also a resolution in our packet regarding some modifications to some meeting rooms at Croswell. The athletic fields, again, they're working on the dugout roofs. They're waiting for delivery of the school board, or scoreboards. The, the rain was impacting the site, especially the JV softball field, which, out of the three fields, the two varsity are going to be, the two varsity fields, softball and baseball, are going to be synthetic turf. And the JV girl softball is going to be natural grass. The robotics center site work, work is continuing on that. And they keep working on the inside and outside and brick and the roof and all the good things that go on outside. Havel, Washington, and Amanda Moore, they're working on their additions. And there's some updates in there. They're tying in the one building to another, the new building to Washington. Amanda Moore, the roofing was supposed to start this week, and windows are going in at Havel. Group Two projects, we have a resolution tonight for the administration renovation building project. And we have a resolution for some asbestos abatement as well for the admin building as they move forward, as they begin to move forward. There were a number of change orders that the district approved. Those are highlighted in our notes. I don't need to go through them each individually, so you can see what those were. I mentioned the resolution regarding the meeting rooms at Croswell for some updates to that that is requiring a change order. One thing to keep in mind with each of these change orders is that each project has some contingency funds set aside. There's a percentage of the project for those things that are unknown because when you're working with older buildings, you're getting underground, you're doing things with walls, you don't know what you're going to get into. So there's some contingency money set aside for that. And that's what is being used for these resolutions as they appear, as they are for the change orders. Mr. Storm gave his director's report. He's doing well on updating his equipment. He is requesting from the 2021 bond maintenance equipment, a CAT 906 loader. In the past, we've rented equipment, and he feels that he could use this equipment for more than just snow. And it would save probably about two and a half persons of time, is what he had mentioned to us. So he asked, he asked the committee if it could, if it could be put on the board agenda for passage for this evening. We said yes. We also asked him to include the brochure on the unit as well. And you'll also notice that there is some MI Deal pricing that institutions get, and I believe it saves us over $7,300 or so for that on purchasing. So it's already been bid out. That's bid pricing. And like I mentioned, the resolutions are on for us to vote on later on in the agenda. That's all I have.
Mike, I have a question. I don't, I, there's been some email communication about it today, but just in the past, it's been brought up too. If we could kind of review why and for the community, the Amanda Moore playground. I know it's been brought up a lot over the last couple of years, and I noticed it's in Group Four, which we did approve that. Could you give some feedback, or maybe Dr. Robinson can? Because I understand, you know, why equipment is at some of those other schools that are in Group Three, that would create efficiency, but there's work, site work being done at Amanda Moore. So, I mean, just looking at it compared to our other schools, it's, it's kind of a black mark on our district. And I'm just wondering why, you know, what was the reasoning behind that? And is there anything that we can do to move that up?
Okay. Now?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, we think of playground, we immediately jump to the equipment. And playground, you know, renovations that we've been discussing involve, you know, different levels of site work, playpads, walking paths, and things like that. So none of our playgrounds have had any significant investment outside of the individual parent groups, in some cases raising money to purchase a piece of equipment. And those are super costly. So we went through that process in the winter into early spring in terms of reconciling the remaining projects. The principals were actively involved in each building and creating prioritization. And that's ultimately what led to, you know, drafting the Group Three and Group Four projects. That being said, we, we had a meeting in June with all the principals to discuss what is a baseline that we want to achieve to make sure that all playgrounds in the district have some uniformity in regards to these key elements. And then, you know, based on the site size and, and, and things like that, there, there might be the ability to do a little bit more at some than others just because they have more space. And that typically would be ball fields or something like that, that allows for additional community use. So, you know, that, that vetted the process. Amanda Moore is in the interior renovation, in the media center renovation in Group Three. So the other thing that I would highlight, Mr. Storm has been working separately because we, in starting the design work for these projects, we actually had playground inspections done at all of our facilities. And that led us to the need to, you know, repair some of the equipment, decommission some of the equipment, improve the engineered wood fiber area. And we're right in the thick of, of making plans for that. So where it may appear nothing is going to happen, that isn't necessarily the case, especially if there's equipment at Amanda Moore that we can repair. And believe it or not, the, the issues with equipment in some of the cases of some of the other buildings were actually more than ended up at, at Amanda Moore and a few others. So, so anyways, I, there's only so much that the architects can design, and then only so much that the construction management company can manage in a season. That doesn't mean there isn't some fluidity, especially in the instance of, you know, we're buying equipment, you know what I'm saying? So nothing is final, you know, I'll take the concern back to the construction team. And then get back to the board just simply with what is coming out of the more recent inspections that isn't necessarily connected to the, to the 2021 bond.
I would like to please have a discussion about the administration building remodel. I don't know what page it is on your packet, but I'm looking at the total amount recommended for the project. So almost $2 million for a complete, am I seeing that right? For a complete remodel of the admin building?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Does that seem, does it seem like maybe, I don't know if we can move the administration goings on to a newer building or, because I know we talked about that before, because the building's quite old. And I don't know if investing this much money into an older building would be financially impactful for us or to move, you know, offices somewhere else. That's my question.
So I guess just a little bit of history. The original plan, when I came to the district, wasn't, wasn't really vetted out, but had, had proposed the potential of the administration building moving here. We can clearly see it was, you know, it didn't take more than a year to determine there wasn't enough space. And I'm so grateful for that because the number of ninth graders we have now is about 100 more than we would have even anticipated back then, based on enrollment at that time. So that quickly, you know, was not the case. And there was, there was discussion within the board and outside that removing, you know, not having facilities in the Village of Romeo would be of a concern to the community. So fast forward, the next phase of it was, would there be the possibility of moving the administrative offices as part of the Croswell renovation? And then you add in the advent of Free Universal Preschool, the footprint of the building compared to the, the number of people we have staffed in three floors at the administration building.
How many would you say? Because I have no idea.
25, 30-ish, somewhere in between.
Full-time?
Yeah.
25 to 30?
Yeah, so, so at that point in time, the money that was allocated for administration building renovation within the Croswell project was set aside to begin to explore just what would it look like to renovate the current building. I will tell you that I think this, this is nothing extravagant in terms of what we're doing at the building.
I'm not suggesting that it is. I'm just wondering if investing that much money into an old building that's going to need a roof and it's going to need...
Yeah. The roof was repaired last summer, so we're good there. There is some heating and cooling equipment that needs to be replaced. I would just tell you, in the footprint of the buildings we have, there is not the space to relocate the entire administrative staff. And certainly now, not that we're going to fill up Croswell hopefully with four-year-olds.
That would be nice.
Yeah, and so, and I will tell you that there's a significant number of employees at the administration building that really like working there. They like the aesthetics of it. I also know that things like the carpeting that haven't been replaced in 30-plus years.
Yeah, I've been there.
You know, so...
We definitely kicked that can. It's kind of like the pool. We kept saying, should we put money into it? Should we? And were we moving? It's just like the pool. We kept putting it at the end of the list. But the other part that I, just being someone that has worked at a central office, it doesn't have a huge meeting space, but there are definitely times where small groups are coming there. Your administrators are, are able to run up to their office and grab stuff. And you'd lose a lot of time if, if everybody was, you know, separated. And the other part that, and Dr. Robinson can speak to it more too, is the whole central enrollment, having a place that is conducive for people to come and register their kids and not be in the middle of a school day, or parking, or doors being locked, you know, all the other stuff that you have going on, you know, a person just manning and greeting those, those, those people when they come. And then, of course, it goes back to the whole being in, in town for that too.
In town, yeah, yeah. I mean, it certainly seems convenient for everybody. I was just, you know, financially, just want to ask the question, is it lucrative to fix the building or to, say, rent an office space somewhere that's impersonal? But everybody can sort of have their own spaces? Because there is, you know, industrial office spaces that you can rent and things like that. But I understand both sides.
Right. We've, we've added some staff in certain departments, so there is a little bit of reconfiguring, some workstations, office spaces, and things like that. We, you know, there was a renovation done at some point in the past that kind of closed off a room on the first floor to have a small little break kitchen room. And then this, the rest of it is kind of like the copy room and storage. Well, all the heating and cooling is in the little area that was closed off, so the rest of that part of that room doesn't necessarily get the heating and cooling. So we're opening that up to have an adequate-sized space where when we do want to meet with the staff together, we do birthday celebrations and things like that. There is a legitimate place for people to go and eat lunch, you know, and, and spend time with their colleagues. So I, I think the other thing that we learned in 2016, because we were able to do a significant number of those projects during the school year, is, is we get way more competitive and favorable pricing. And this project will be done during the school year. And we couldn't do that if it, you know, was quote-unquote "at a school building" in terms of renovating space. So I think our bids came in really favorably. Abatement is abatement, especially, you know, in our facilities that are a little bit older. But we're still under budget, and we'll make some decisions in terms of furniture and things that we can afford to replace because there's a chunk of money still available for that. And outside of the heating and cooling replacement and the plumbing replacement that would have needed to be done anyways, the rest of it really is cheaper than some of the renovations that we've done at the school buildings.
You know, maybe now is not the time, but I remember the discussion in a prior facilities about the heating and cooling at the middle school. What's going on with that?
We're on our way. We're about two-thirds of the way done.
We have like nine of them?
Yeah, there's a lot of units to be replaced.
Sorry, I got to add one more. The excavator, the CAT 960 loader. We're asking for a brand-new 2024 beautiful piece of machinery that costs $123,000. So I'm wondering, why can't we buy a used machine for $80,000?
I don't know the market and availability of that. I will tell you that Mr. Storm has done a thorough job of that uni, uni, the equipment replacement timeline. And we did rent. And this equipment is, got a long, long-term life for the district, multiple use. The biggest thing we will use it for is efficiency and snow removal. So...
So that was one of the questions that I had, the snow removal. We just bought a brand-new truck, right? With a plow on it. So I'm wondering, how fast can a CAT loader drive from the high school to? And I'm not being facetious at all. I'm just wondering, in a snowstorm, how fast can, can, you know, a dump truck drive to Indian Hills or Amanda Moore or wherever?
So one of the things that was shared in the committee that, that Mike didn't highlight is the ability for this equipment to get this building, the high school, Havel, all done in, in what would take two and a half trucks. And it's all about timing. You know, we can't predict when the storms are going to hit. What we can predict. And this, this specific equipment is way more roadworthy than a skid steer or some of the other things we've rented in the past that basically get on a site and they're at that site. So we see this sometimes in some large department store parking lots or strip malls and that where you'll see equipment just parked there and it stays there all winter and the company comes. This is a way smaller, I guess, scaled version of that, but is roadworthy to get back and forth, even potentially to Indian Hills if we wanted it to, depending on when the storm hit. Our trucks do plow, but they also are full-service vehicles throughout the year as well.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we, I mean, would it be more advantageous to purchase another truck and put a plow on it? And that would actually be half the cost of buying one of these guys?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not as fun, but...
I don't know if this is about fun, but for some, it probably would. The other thing is some of the attachments that we don't necessarily know that we would ever purchase, but they are rentable, are sweeping our own parking lots. There's the ability to get a, a brush roller on this. There's a bunch of hydrolic equipment that if we had specific site work to do and things like that, this tractor is capable to be outfitted with that. And we would be renting this, this piece of auxiliary equipment for a couple days. And that's where we could, you know, I don't think we would buy those auxiliary things, but we, we have the, the push, the snow pusher, I forget the name of that, that, already that can, that can attach to this and...
Okay. So I guess it just brings me back to my original question, is why can't we buy a used one? And this is a question not to be answered right now. This is a question that, you know, because I did a quick Google search and I found one for 80 grand and it was four years old. You know, the condition of it, who knows? You know, that's something for Mr. Storm and yourself to, to take a look at. I'm just proposing that that might be a more viable option than, than this, like a hefty cost for a couple of snows a year. And I know it does other things.
Yeah.
But mostly, the proposal was for snow removal.
Chris, if you want to come up to the podium, you could probably address some of these questions.
I would think warranty for sure.
You don't know how bad they were beat up either.
Yeah.
All right.
Good evening. So, good questions. Basically, I think Dr. Robinson summed it up pretty well. The efficiency that something like this could add, like we talk about a truck, we have done a good job in the past couple of years of bringing our plan up to speed as far as equipment goes. Part of that plan was this tractor or skid steer. We rented one in the last couple of seasons to just see how it worked out. And honestly, the smaller machine than what we're, what's proposed tonight cleared about two and a half times as much snow as a truck. Part of our issue sometimes is getting operators. So to have a pickup, it'd take two and a half, possibly three, to do the work of this one machine. That comes in three operators. So that's part of the issue that we don't have, to clear timely. Like Dr. Robinson stated, when the snow comes, we only have hour and a half to get all nine lots cleared. And then we go back around and start doing playpads, warehouse, and some of those other facilities that are not so crucial to having the kids arrive to school. So speed is the big thing. Longevity is the other. A machine like that with, what our use would be, probably five, 600 hours a year, probably lasts us 20, 25, 30 years. You see some on the market, maybe even older than that. Purchasing used over new, with new, you're going to get a five-year, and included in that was an extended warranty, so you get the full five years, basically, I wouldn't call it bumper-to-bumper, but loader-to-rear-end coverage, where when you go, when you go use, the unknown is always the thing. You get 3,000, 4,000 hours, there could be some things come up. I don't know. I mean, these machines probably are built to last a long time, but I don't know how it was cared for in the past. I don't know how maintenance was. And typically, when you have the opportunity to use MI Deal or Omni or Sourcewell, it's usually a pretty good thing for municipalities and schools to utilize that and purchase new for that reason, because of that large discount. If we had to pay full price, certainly used could be an option. The next thing with buying used that becomes a challenge is if, let's say 80,000 is our budget, we have to, in order to satisfy the requirements of bidding practices, you'd have to try to find three machines that are very similar to that age, hours, condition, to pick the best one. We can't just go pick one off the shelf and say, it's $80,000. What do we use for comparables? So used is a more challenging route. And the MI Deal thing is, it's a really good way to go for schools and municipalities.
How much did we spend to rent?
It was like $12,500 last year.
For everything?
For the unit itself. The tool carrier is what I call it, you know. The snow box we purchased, that didn't, that wasn't a rental option. So we purchased that, I think it was three or 4,000, then it's just ours to keep.
Sure.
And that attachment will go on to, the tractor that we have now is probably not large enough to push it, but it would actually move it around, a skid steer or a unit like what I've proposed.
Okay.
They're quick attach, they're universal. So pretty much any machine that has that skid steer attachment will pick, will hook up to it and go.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Thank you.
Not yet.
Okay.
Thanks, I'm messing with you.
Anything else for facilities, or we can move on to superintendent's report?
Just highlighting those committee meetings that are upcoming in the next few weeks. And I emailed that to the board. So a couple policy committee meetings, safety committee meeting, and curriculum committee meeting in between the remainder of July and August. A couple things from my report. I'll cover academic services for Mr. Murray and Mrs. McFarland tonight. This is the final week of our summer school programming at all levels. So it's been a successful week. We give our staff who work that some, a little bit of a break before school starts and our children as well. So a five-week program wrapped around the Fourth of July holiday. Grateful to our staff who have participated in both leading that and, and working with the kids. We've learned some things this year in terms of offering high dosage tutoring in addition to the traditional. We also designed some programming specific to us based on, you know, things that we've used out of the box from the ISD in past years. So, so I think we've got a model to move forward in, in future years. And summer school will come to a close this week. Hiring, we, you know, had a little bit of lull the beginning of July, but we still have some vacant positions that we're working on. Our professional staff hires, the middle school assistant principal process began last week. First-round interviews were today, so that's in process. And hopefully, we'll get to a finalist early next week that then I will meet with. And we can move forward to hopefully land that position and get that person started as close to the beginning of the contractual year for administrators as possible. We have math and science teaching positions that are in process. They ran those positions to some degree in conjunction with each other to get, to get people involved. But when it came to teaching specific lessons, of course, they were content specific, or will be content specific. We also have the flexibility to consider the two strongest candidates out of the pool and potentially take a current teacher, change an assignment, maybe a grade level or something that they're teaching within these content areas to make sure that we're doing our best to get the two best teaching candidates out of this process. But that very well might be separate math and, and science teachers. Special ed has been really difficult, especially at the secondary level. But we do have, we are in process for the middle school version and, and think we have some candidates that could pan out there. We're still seeking candidates at the high school. We've gone through a couple of initial rounds even before the end of the school year. And we're just, don't want to settle. We want to make sure we get the right person. And there's still... wanna settle, we wanna make sure we get the right person, um, and there's still some time for that. Uh, we have a ECSE, uh, teaching position vacancy, and they actually have a finalist, uh, that I believe I'll meet with before the end of the week. So that speaks to our professional staff, some of the support staff vacancies, uh, we're a, we are of course still looking for food service, uh, early childhood SAC, uh, and a couple of bus drivers that aren't on the slide here, so I wanna be sure to mention, um, if someone were to watch the meeting or anyone is here that knows of people that might be interested, um, positions are all, uh, listed on the employment, uh, tab on our website, or they can reach out directly to employee services. Uh, but our Croweswell clerical position, um, we have a finalist for that job. Um, we had a couple of people we were considering, um, for the ninth-grade cler, uh, secretary position, and that didn't pan out, so, um, next week, we're gonna resume, you know, um, seeking candidates and reviewing candidates. We have a plan in place, um, to start the school year, uh, with promoting our clerk to the secretary position and getting some sub-help, uh, maybe even potentially one of our recently-retired secretaries, just so we can be sure to find the right person. Um, and then we have a couple of paraprofessional vacancies that, um, will work towards filling once the building administrators come back at the beginning of August. Um, so that's kind of the hiring update. Um, and then, um, just to kind of reemphasize, uh, although we're still, uh, working through negotiations with, uh, the REA, I was grateful, um, that, um, right after the holiday, we agreed that putting out some initial, initial calendar information made sense, so I appreciate, um, their support in that regard. Um, we actually are transitioning to starting the Tuesday after Labor Day. We're in a couple-year cycle where Labor Day is early in the month of September again, um, so we'll start with a half-day for students on September third, uh, and then we've just annotated primarily for parents and, and to some degree for staff, our fall professional development days on September twenty-fifth and November sixth. Uh, it is our traditional Thanksgiving recess Wednesday through Friday, uh, and our two-week winter break, um, as listed. One of the things that I wanna, I'll make sure to emphasize is, we did have, uh, clerical error on our, um, school times, and that was specific to the half-day at the high school. Um, that dismissal is ten-thirty like it has been the past two years, um, the information we sent out said ten-twenty-five. So that five minutes probably would mean a lot to some, some high school students maybe out there in the world, so ten-thirty is our half-day, uh, high school dismissal time. So we'll continue our diligence, um, to, to get this, uh, get a tentative agreement to, to, um, bring to the board for approval. As soon as we have that, we'll put out calendar information, um, for the full year that will include conference dates, uh, and things like that. And our building principals, specifically at the middle school and high school, will be communicating additional information on Bulldog Days. I didn't include that in my report, but it was included, uh, in the one-page, uh, calendar information that went out. So more to come on calendar, but this gives us a starting point, and, uh, we're communicating with our teachers about, uh, professional development that will be in that week before Labor Day. That's all I have for tonight.
All right, I did not receive any public comment. Moving on to our action items, can I have a motion for Employee Services Resolution fifty-six, which is a personnel update? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Antoine, support by Dr. Demus, yes?
Got it.
Any questions or concerns?
I don't think so.
Seeing none? You're good?
I think so.
I have it up.
A lot of school in here.
On a super high, um, this is...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Good thing I'm blind and my font's at about eighteen.
I got it.
Anybody else need to see? All right, no questions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Employee Services fifty-seven, unless did we want to stop? We do have Ms. Dawson here.
Do you wanna stop?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll take a minute, Ava Dawson is here tonight. Ava Dawson, um, is, is just, she is such a consummate professional in her knowledge of CTE is ever-growing, um, and we're grateful for the opportunity to move her into this full-time director position. She's been doing double duty and, and she's very protective of her architecture design program that she built. Um, so finding the right teacher, uh, and the fact that we were able to do that and, uh, have the teacher spend some time teaching a portion of Ava's classes this past semester, uh, and having this industry professional sure that they want to teach high school kids, uh, I think the, the wait has been worth it, and so, uh, I'm excited, Ava, at the additional time and capacity, and I know you'll also be there to make sure our architecture is still as strong as it has been. So congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. May I have a motion for Employee Services Resolution fifty-seven, which is our non-affiliate contracts, twenty-four through twenty-seven? Moved by Dr. Demus.
Second.
Support by Ikorst. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next one is Academic Services Resolution fifty-eight, which is our LEGO STEM purchase. Can I have a motion? Moved by Dr. Demus. I have a support.
Support.
Support by Mr. Antoine. Any questions or concerns?
I do have a question.
Sure.
About the Legos. Let me find it. I believe the number that comes to mind is forty-six thousand.
Forty-six, three, six, oh, out of thirty-one A at-risk grant funds.
Okay. How do we get to that number?
The financial...
I wanna...
What, what do we buy? I know it's robot kits, um, I just read that and I was a little...
So there were some permanent kits that the STEM teachers and the middle school project lead-the-way teachers have in their classrooms, and then there were personal learning kits for, uh, all the students and families, uh, that attended the family engagement activities.
And Mrs. McFarland, this is a shift in...
This is a shift in what the funding would be from.
The funding source.
Correct.
What source?
So we, we moved it from a, a, a federal grant to the thirty-one A at-risk state grant.
So go back, were those families given those to keep?
The personal learning kits, correct.
Okay, and what program was that for?
These were for at-risk students to engage them and their families after school, but there were kits, larger kits, uh, I believe each elementary STEM teacher got six, so there were some Spike Prime, Essential, and then, I forget what the other one was that they got, and then middle school got, uh, Spike Prime, which are...
So some of the equipment stays in those rooms?
Correct.
And some went with those?
Correct, they were personal learning kits, they were small, where they could build, right, and, and engage them within the field of STEM with their families, and then the kits the teachers will use in the classroom with their students.
That is a part of the STEM curriculum?
Elementary STEM program, and then our project lead-the-way in the middle school.
Lead-the-way.
P-L-T-W.
P-L-T-W, oh.
So we have a robotics offered in seventh and eighth with Project Lead-the-Way, and there's design and modeling in sixth grade that can use these kits.
How long do they last?
Depends on how heavily they're used, but I think we still have some, a different kind of kit in our elementary that are three years old.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Who made the original?
Dr. Demus. And Mr. Antoine, supported. All right, the next one is Facilities Resolution fifty-nine, which is the administration building renovation project contract approvals.
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Antoine.
Support.
Support by Ms. Ikorst. This is, I'm trying to, I don't know why my thing's not moving now. Do you need the amount? My thing is sticking.
Want me to read it to you?
Yeah.
It was like one million eight hundred.
One million eight oh eight, three nineteen, out of the twenty-twenty-one facilities bond. Are there any questions? I'm so sorry, I feel like I'm so out of whack. We had the motion by Antoine and supported by Ikorst, is there any questions?
I think I asked them all.
All right. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed signify by no? Motion carries. Moving on to Facilities Resolution number sixty, which is the administration building abatement contract. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Ms. Ikorst.
Support.
Support by Mr. Antoine. Any questions or concerns? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next one is Facilities Resolution sixty-one, which is the Croweswell change order approval with Hicks Construction. All the information was in your board packet.
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Antoine.
Support.
Support by Ms. Rice. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Facilities Resolution number sixty-two, which is operations department equipment purchase, the CAT nine-sixty loader. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Support. Any other questions? Do we want roll call?
We can roll call.
Okay, let's do roll call.
Mr. Antoine made the motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnet?
Yes.
Mr. Connor's not here. Um, Dr. Demus?
Demus, how do you vote?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Mrs. Ikorst?
Yes.
I'm gonna say no. And Mr. Young?
No.
Moving on, I still don't have anybody for public comment. All right. Board discussion for the good of the district?
Came to the quickest meeting, Mrs. Dawson, that we had in a while.
Yes, please, yes, please.
That would be nice.
Congratulations, though, truly.
That's wonderful.
You've been key to a lot of our academy programs, and it's, it's, when, uh, when I saw your name in the board packet, the first thing that came to my head is, out of all the top-ten senior breakfasts that I go to, you're usually always there, at least, um, and that, that, that means a lot, that means you're making a, a pretty huge impact, so congratulations. All right, with that, can I have a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of collective bargaining, and we will not be coming out to make a decision? Moved by Dr. Demus. I will support. Can I have roll call?
Mr. Antoine?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnet?
Yes.
Dr. Demus?
Yes.
Mrs. Ikorst?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Mr. Young?
Yep.
Okay.